Hello and thank you for attending this evening. My name is Nell Claussen and I am the Voter Services Chair of the Local League of the League of Women Voters, U.S., a national, nonpartisan, nonprofit organization whose purpose is to promote the informed and active participation of citizens in government. We welcome both men and women. I want to underscore the primary tenet of our organization, nonpartisanship. In the 102 years since we were established, we have never endorsed or opposed a candidate or political party at any level of government. We are ardent about positions, not people. You may wonder why we are continuing to host candidate forums via Zoom rather than in person. As you may be aware, once again, rates of COVID cases are increasing. In addition, the League of Women Voters recorded increased citizen participation in candidate forums when they moved from in-person to Zoom. In some cases, audiences were up to 300% of our average in-person numbers. We are truly grateful and impressed by those of you who are participating in tonight's forum, to the candidates for your willingness and courage to run for office, to the audience for your involvement in the democratic process, and to the local League members who expend a great deal of time and energy to make these forums fair and informative. I hope you enjoyed the slideshow with important information about the League. If you missed it, please note it will run again at the end of the forum for about five minutes. With that, I'd like to introduce Linda Benson, the moderator this evening. Linda has moderated many forums for the League and we do appreciate her volunteering to do this one for us this evening. Linda?
Thank you, um, thank you, Nell. Uh, just a minute, I gotta do this. Okay. Um, welcome, everybody, and I want to do a special thank you to Nell. We have many volunteers, uh, for the League and we have some who even work full-time and still manage to chair committees and Nell is one of those and she always does a good job, so a special thank you to her. Welcome and thank you to everyone online for taking the time to be an educated voter, which is the primary reason for the League's existence. If you miss the PowerPoint, it will be shown again. I want to thank the staff at our North Olympic Library System for cosponsoring this forum and particularly Sarah Morrison for helping with the logistics. Thank you also to Peninsula Area Public Access TV for cosponsoring and Silas Cruz for being our technician. You will meet our timer, Hella Anderson, a League member, in a minute. And a special welcome and thank you to our candidates who are participating. We have three candidates here, Amy Miller and Jim Hogwood, running for seat five, and Callie Jones, running for seat seven. Brendan Meyer was unable to attend but has sent a representative to read a statement from him. They'll be answering questions submitted by voters through our website, info@lwvcla.org. A good way to learn about all of the candidates' views on issues is to go to vote411.org, which is a site made available at the state level of the League. On this site, candidates provide written, unedited answers to questions. You may also view unedited recordings of all of our forums by going to our website for a link to our YouTube channel. That's where you can view the primary forum for seat six of the Port Angeles City Council. Tonight's recording will be available in a few days. Now I will introduce Hella Anderson, who will explain how the timing will work for tonight's forum. Hello?
Hello. I'm Helly Anderson, your timer for tonight's forum. Here's a demonstration of how timing will work. I'll be alternating between the timer titled, uh, screen and countdown video. After the moderator asks a question, each candidate will have the same amount of time to respond. Once a candidate begins speaking, I'll start the countdown timer. The timer begins with a purple background and when there are 50 seconds remaining, the background turns yellow. When the timer is up, the background is red and the word "stop" appears. Candidates may finish their sentence, but then need to stop. Thank you for staying within the time, Linda. And now back to Linda.
Thank you, Hella. Um, so we will start with a review of what the city council does. There are seven members serving on Port Angeles City Council. Each is elected for a four-year term. Members are, do not represent any particular district or area of the city. In the general election, voters cast their vote for all council positions on the ballot. The mayor and deputy mayor are elected by the council members every two years at the first meeting in January. As many of you know, Port Angeles has a city manager government. The city manager is responsible for all of the operations of the city. One of the primary council responsibilities is to hire, supervise, evaluate, terminate if necessary, the city manager. The council also sets forth the vision, strategic plan, policies, budget, and legislation under which the city manager and all departments work. City manager or city council members receive $550 a month and can expect to do 30 to 40 hours of council work per month. We'll begin with candidate introductions. Each candidate has 90 seconds to tell us their experience and qualifications as well as their priorities and expectations for their terms of office should they be elected. And we will start, uh, with Amy Miller. You have 90 seconds.
Good evening, thank you. Uh, my name is Amy Miller. I am a social worker and have worked and volunteered locally since I moved to Port Angeles with my husband in, uh, 2015. We immediately started attending city council meetings and we made it a date night in order to get to know our community. My first year in Port Angeles, I began volunteering to pick up litter with P.A. Can and then alongside first responders out in the field. Seeing the gaps in service, I began to build the rediscovery program and created a collaboration of city departments and nonprofits. Developed, uh, excuse me, that still is talked about, uh, across the country to represent best practices and I'm extremely proud of that work. While on council, I've been working directly to address key priorities in our community. I am committed to improving public safety, ensuring funding to maintain community-based programs while also prioritizing safe staffing levels. I promote economic development by advocating for vacant building policies that encourage growth and progress. I plan to support initiatives that enhance housing opportunities while addressing environmental concerns. I believe in transparency, community engagement, and working collaboratively to make our city a better place for everyone. Thank you for having me here tonight. I would be honored to have your vote for Port Angeles City Council, position five, and I'm really excited for the opportunity to answer your most pressing questions today.
Thank you. Uh, next, Jim Hagwood, you have 90 seconds.
Great, uh, thank you very much and good evening and thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum. Uh, I'm, I am a proud lifelong member and resident of Port Angeles with over 40 years working to make Port Angeles a better place to live. Uh, my wife and I just, uh, celebrated our 41st wedding anniversary this week. Uh, and I have two, two children and six grandchildren that live in Port Angeles and this is why I'm committed to running for the city council. I'm running because I think I have the knowledge, experience, and leadership to represent the most citizens of Port Angeles. I will bring expertise and balance to city council and I am ready to serve. Uh, ideal in reality and results and I think that's something that's absent from the council, uh, currently. So my background and where this knowledge and experience and leadership comes from, first of all, started off, uh, early in my career when I started working in, in our family business Hagwood's Restaurant. I managed that for over 15 years, managing over 100 people in the community. I've spent over 40 years as a rental owner and developing real estate and remodeling homes in Port Angeles. I spent five years as the EDC director. Uh, the most recent three years I've spent as a, uh, Realtor, uh, at Port Angeles Realty and I've also been lucky enough to spend 14 years on the Board of Directors, uh, at the Jamestown Skowam Tribe and I look forward to your questions tonight.
Thank you. Callie Jones, you have 90 seconds.
Good evening, my name is Callie Jones, thank you for, uh, having us here tonight. Um, I'm running for council position number seven and I am also a local, uh, Port Angeles, just like Jim. I was raised here and I'm back here now after, uh, college raising my family. Um, a little bit of background about me, I've got a four-year degree in biology and also a master's of science in nursing, um, from Vanderbilt University in Nashville, Tennessee. I, I practiced there as a pediatric nurse practitioner for about eight years after I graduated college. Um, and then came home, moved back home to raise my family and I've now got five little children, I'm currently a stay-at-home mom. Um, their ages are nine to one and I've been married to my husband for, for 12 years now. So I'm running for city council because since I moved back in 2016, I've noticed some really concerning trends in the city, um, with increasing crime, drug use, homelessness, overdose, um, overdoses and dwindling economy. So I'm hoping to be a change agent to reverse some of those trends. And also, um, I guess my, my purview or my main focus, you know, coming from a mom's perspective and a healthcare perspective, is quality of life for people who live here in Port Angeles, who visit and also for people who work here. Um, and I have a, my primary focus is going to be on public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Hodgson will now read a 90-second statement from Brendan Meyer.
Good evening and thank you to League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. Brendan and Brett's not being here tonight due to a prior commitment. My name is Mark Hodgson and I will read their statement. Brendan Meyer is a husband, parent, self-employed, new media marketer, marketer and for the past four years, your city councillor. Brendan's experience on council has given them insight on when to push, when to compromise, and when to stand firm. Brendan has not been afraid to cast a sole dissenting vote. Brendan's fellow council members recognized their leadership and elected Brendan Deputy Mayor, a position embraced with humility. Brendan prioritizes succinct discussion and steers clear political posturing and instead seeks commonality and imaginative solutions. In governance, silence is consent and only the voices that are raised get acknowledged. There is a need for continuous citizen engagement and Brendan is passionate about this issue. One of their main goals for the next term is to direct city staff to create a framework for establishing neighborhood associations that can work in collaboration with the city. This will enhance communication, ensure everyone comprehends the issues at hands, and taps into the community for innovative solutions. If reelected, Brendan's focus will also include collaborating with grassroots, citizen-led organizations to short-circuit homelessness. Vote for Brendan for experience, courage, and commitment. For more details, you can go to votebrendan.com. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll move into the questions we have for tonight. We received a lot of really good questions from citizens and so what we've done is combined some of them and they're arranged by topic. We combined by topic. And answers will be limited to 90 seconds per question and speaking order will be rotated with each question. Um, so the first, uh, first questions are general, just some general questions. Um, the first one is, what factor do you believe should be in a Port Angeles City Council Code of Ethics and what constitutes a conflict of interest? Amy, you're first on this one. No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Callie's first. I have to keep my, uh, I have to keep straight on what I've got here. Callie, Callie Jones is first, sorry.
Thank you for that question, I have not got that question before. Um, conflict of interest, I think there is, um, there's already some pretty clear rules about conflict of interest, um, you know, with the council and there are avenues for, uh, council member, council members to recuse themselves. Um, you know, should there be any conflict of interest in terms of, um, you know, contracts or anything that's being voted on that they might have, uh, you know, a beneficial interest in? In terms of Code of Ethics, um, I believe there already is one in place as well, actually, I'm not, I'm not sure about that. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't change anything currently, I think, if that's, if, if I'm answering the question correctly.
Okay. Uh, Jim, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I'm fine. I'm fine, thank you. Yeah, so first of all, I think, uh, starting with the Code of Ethics question, I think that, um, it is imperative that council members, when they are elected, they need to represent them in a, themselves in a professional manner, uh, both in council meetings and, and outside of council meetings. You know, the, the, uh, appearance of fairness or those kinds of things are, are important in government and I recognize that. And one of the ways that as a city council, we deal with that is, is the city has a city attorney and the attorney works on behalf of city staff and is basically working on behalf of the council. And, and so I would defer, in many cases, to the city attorney to make a judgment whether an individual is, uh, you know, has crossed that line of, of a conflict of interest or in, in some cases is an appearance of, uh, of fairness, right? And, and so it's important that that, that attorney provides that judgment so we're not looking at people's views as an appearance of fairness, but rather something that is, is substantive, whether there's a legal relationship or something, or a land relationship or something in a contractual relationship. And that's why I think it's so important that the city attorney is involved in that discussion and makes that determination on behalf of the city council.
Thank you. Amy, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I think I'm all set, Linda, thank you. Um, and, uh, I, I don't have too much to add on top of what the other two candidates, um, talked about. I do think that along with, um, a Code of Ethics, Code of, um, Conduct is also a requirement and something that should be addressed and maybe even looked at or updated periodically where there may be some, and there isn't now, an attendance policy. Uh, we need to have people showing up when they are expected to show up, um, so that they can be part of those votes and those conversations and, um, some, uh, increased level of engagement with the public and with our city staff. There is no requirements on that, I think that, that there may, it, we would benefit from having some codes around those, uh, opportunities. Um, and I, I agree, I think there are, um, policies in place as far as conflict of interest. Um, if a council member's, um, employment or if they are, um, receiving any financial gain by any decisions or votes that they may take on council, um, they are, um, expected to recuse themselves. I also think going a step further, um, in that, you know, if there are friends or family that are also going to be affected by those votes and decisions that are made, I think, uh, a council member should also, uh, fully disclose that information. I believe in complete transparency and if, um, if it's determined, um, a conflict by the council or the attorney, then they must also recuse themselves.
Thank you. Um, okay, we're ready for our next question. Looking into the future, how should the downtown look and why? Please give specific examples of what you want to see for, for Port Angeles and what will you do to make this future happen? Jim, you're first on this one.
Thank you and, you know, I was honored and privileged to, uh, engage in the writing, writing of a new strategic plan uh, for the downtown called Elevate PA. And that was an outcome of the recognition that downtown Port Angeles is entering a period, uh, that, a period of, of investment and energy that we have never seen since the solution of the hogback. So I am committed to that. I've been working in, for the betterment of downtown since the early eighties. Uh, there is excitement going on down there and there are some things that need to be dealt with. Uh, and primarily, the result of that work was that people need to be, I have a feeling of comfort and security and enjoyment to be able to spend time down there. What has happened is, our research showed that people would come downtown to do one thing. Well, we want them to come down and do multiple things and spend time down there. So that has to do with cleanliness, it has to do with appearance, it has to do with customer service, it has to do with amenities, whether they're public, public spaces or the businesses that are down there. So my commitment is, and from that Elevate PA plan was to continue that work uh, based upon a plan, uh, that's, that's very logical to improve the quality of that area, uh, for the future.
Thank you. Callie, you're next with this question, would you like it repeated?
Oh.
Okay.
Sure, sure.
Oh, okay. Looking into the future, how should the downtown look and why? Please give specific examples of what you want to see for Port Angeles and what you will do to make this future happen.
Um, I always, I remember my very first trip to Victoria, British Columbia and I remember how I felt coming back. Um, you know, when we cruised into the harbor on the Victoria side, it was just, you know, kind of this overwhelming sense of, of beauty and awe and I remember coming back to Port Angeles thinking, what must they think coming into town? Um, you know, so I would say beautiful, I want the downtown to just be beautiful and welcoming for people and to do that, it has to be clean. Um, you know, the grandeur maybe not so much, we don't have an Empress Hotel, you know, in downtown Port Angeles, but, um, clean sidewalks, uh, flowers, um, you know, that's, um, something that we would be working through the Parks Department on. I know they had, uh, trouble this year just getting people to work. Um, Mr. Delacott said that typically, I think they have 16 seasonals and this year they only had five. So that's something, um, you know, as a council member, I would like to, to work on and figure out how we could remedy that. But, um, so I would say, uh, beauty, cleanliness, and safety are, are my main priorities um, in the immediate future for the downtown.
Thank you. Amy, would you like the question repeated?
No, thank you very much for asking. Um, I would like to see, um, no empty storefronts. I would like to see a thriving business community down there and I think seeing all of the vacant spaces and for lease signs, um, does not, um, project that we are a thriving economic community down there. So I would like to, um, have the council look at policies regarding vacant storefronts and vacant, um, spaces. I also would like to see, um, uh, an increased avenue for mixed-use, um, uh, places, so commercial and residential, um, living spaces and shopping spaces. And that is something that the council has already made some efforts towards in changing some zoning so that there can be a, um, caretaker residences inside the commercial zone. Um, I also would like to very much see, um, an increased inclusion of our Native American partners. Um, I think, um, previous councils did a nice job of, um, you know, getting the signs put up. Uh, I think we can do better. And I think, um, the other piece that I would also really like to see downtown is some, um, additional signage, drawing people to some, um, maybe lesser-known, uh, uh, amenities or, um, special sites for, uh, tourists and visitors to, uh, draw their attention to those places. And I'll stop talking, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, the next question is, uh, we received several questions on housing. Both housing for our homeless population but affordable housing for the workforce. So these are the ones that were kind of combined because we got a lot of these. Uh, so this question, what do you see as the most important needs people have related to housing? Callie, you're first on this one.
This is a tough question. Uh, thank you for that. Uh, the important, most important need, I would say, is we probably need, um, multiple-family housing in town, something like apartment units, that kind of thing. Uh, Port Angeles is primarily single-family home housing. Um, I know we've got an issue with land. Um, Port Angeles is very unique in the fact of our geography where we have, um, basically, we can't expand north or south, so that limits us a little bit. Um, so I would like to see some more, uh, apartment buildings filling up for families. I know, uh, the economy, you know, with inflation, um, you know, the price of materials, it's hard to have an affordable house with unaffordable materials. But, um, so anyway, that's what I would like to see is the multiple, um, family dwelling units, if you will. Um, the housing for the homeless population is also another issue. I think 4PA, uh, has something really cool that they have in the works for that. Um, I don't know if I want to spoil their surprise, but, um, I'm a big fan with treating, um, I would say the homelessness is a, well, okay. You know, I think I'm, I think I'm just gonna stop because I might get into another issue. So, uh, yes, we'll just leave it at that.
You might get into another question, actually. Uh, Amy, you're next.
This time, Linda, would you please repeat the question?
Certainly. What do you see as the most important needs people have related to housing?
Thank you. Housing. Uh, I think the most important need is, um, more buildings. Um, we need to have, um, I agree with Callie, I think we need to have more multifamily, um, dwellings. We need to have more, um, complexes and I think, um, we also need to have, um, some creative solutions, um, that are coming out. I think, um, really it's, uh, the affordability. Um, and so our, we know that our median household income in Port Angeles is just under $54,000 a year. Um, and affordable means you're spending 30% of that or less on your housing and that is definitely not going to get you rent or purchase a home here. And so I think affordability is a, a really big piece that the council, the current council is doing a lot of work on in regards to changing of ordinances and code and, um, reducing fees. Um, gosh, there's so much to answer on this one. I also think that, um, because of my history and my work with, um, the, the unhoused population, I would say that there are several really big needs for that group of folks and one of them would be transitional housing, um, to help get people from the streets into the housing. I also think, um, we need our community to support some creative initiatives like safe parking and other, um, temporary transitional spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Jim, you're next, would you like me to repeat it?
Uh, no, I think I, I think I've got the question. It's, it's a very complex question that you've asked here. Um, first of all, we, we need to recognize that there is an economic imbalance uh, in our area from the, the, the cost of housing related to what the income is in our area. So we need to understand what that challenge is. Now, my history of economic development is that part of this solution is an economic development strategy that increases earning potential and wage growth in the area. And I believe that we need to make available, and, and when I say make available, that's primarily land-based for all kinds of housing. On the, on what would be considered below-market rate housing, that needs to be dealt with by the nonprofit agencies, Peninsula Housing Authority, Peninsula Behavior Health, those kinds of folks are experts in doing that kind of thing. The city's role in that is to provide the, the utility services, the street infrastructure to allow those, those kinds of things to happen. But I believe that there, there, there needs to be a, uh, a, a strategy that includes development of all types of housing, uh, in the community and the, and the city's role is to provide those utilities and the infrastructure for those homes to be built. And we are short on that now in Port Angeles, in our land, land bank for housing.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, um, are, this is, this is a kind of a difficult one. It was sent in by a citizen, so I'm gonna ask it. Are you aware of any empirically proven effective ways of tackling housing issues for all citizens? Uh, Amy, you're first on this one.
Housing first. Housing first is empirically proven to be a successful way of getting people um housed permanently. It is, it has been studied. We know that is true. Moving off of sort of the um the unhoused population and there are strategies that are being used in cities across the country to help to increase the density of their housing um units and we are, we are doing our best, our city staff, our council, we are doing our very best to make sure that we are reaching out into those communities, even communities that may not uh look like or represent um Port Angeles. In order to get some information on how they are um working on these issues, Squim, our neighboring uh city, is also working on trying to identify how to bring more construction of housing units into their city. So there are a lot of different ways that um cities can contribute to increasing the housing. I don't, I don't believe that it's the only city's um responsibility to provide utilities. I believe the cities can be much more invested and involved in creating more housing units. Um and other cities have done that. Um Jefferson County out in the um
Yeah, okay. You can finish your sentence if you want to. It's hard to stop right in the middle, I know. Um Jim, you're next for this question.
Yeah, can you, can you say that question? You said this one was gonna be even harder than the last one.
Yeah, well, it would be for, it would be for me, I should say.
I get that.
Are you aware of any empirically proven effective ways of tackling housing issues for all citizens? I think, I guess that, I think that, that what the asker wants to know on this is research-based empirically proven ideas for housing.
Well, I, I can, I can speak to this from my experience of doing it. I have built housing, I have built multifamily housing units, and it is an economic question. Uh and, and we, and you have to the sort of slice this into its parts, right? If we're talking about a subsidized, subsidized housing, affordable housing, that's a completely different issue and different funding model for that to happen versus market-rate uh housing. And, and that's why this question is very difficult because it's hard to talk about both of those in the same, in the same context. But there are, it is a supply and demand question. And one of the issues that Port Angeles is faced with right now is we do not have very much available land. There's about six hundred and fifty lots that are left available to, to build on. And of those, probably half of those are just not buildable because they're in one of the ravines or they're not built. So we don't have much land and particularly we don't have large parcels of land. There was an article in the paper today regarding a three-hundred-unit uh housing development in Port Townsend that's going on. It's on fourteen acres. So one of, one of the facts that we have to understand is we don't have fourteen acres of land that's just readily available for three-hundred housing units to be built. So we have to look and start the conversation at that, at that level of, of what's required for a number of houses to be built.
Thank you. Callie, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, thank you. This is not my area of expertise and I have no um awareness of any evidence-based practice or best practice with this. So I'm gonna just let you know that I don't have anything to add.
Okay, that's fair. Um so now the next question is kind of long. It's got a little um information on it, but it, it's an important one and it goes to exactly what you've all been talking about. Medium home prices here are currently in the three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar range, while median income is about thirty-six thousand. Something the city is looking at are development fees paid to build certain types of housing. There will be a continuance of a public hearing about this on October seventeenth. What is your position on this issue? And what do you see as a viable path forward for the city to help with affordable housing for the workforce? And Jim, you're first on this one.
Okay, so um I think there's three things that the city can do to help uh build affordable. There's been some movement that they've already made in regards to uh zoning changes. That's good. Um I think the city needs to identify uh some parcels that are probably adjacent to or within the city of Port Angeles that do not have sewer availability yet, that will not allow the kind of density. If you're talking about fifty or sixty homes to be able to do that, that's number one. And primarily the cities, we have to remember that the reality of building homes is we only, we have little effect over what the cost of that is. We can't really adjust material costs. We can't regulate uh labor costs and, and we have a land issue. So the only thing left with the city of Port Angeles is really the, the amount of time and the requirements that it has in the permitting process. And I'm, I'm committed to working on streamlining this and, and the permitting process has two pieces. One is cost, which they're talking about raising it from ten thousand to eighteen thousand dollars for a fifteen-hundred-square-foot home. I don't think it's the right time to do that. Um and then secondly is time. There is a cost for a builder or even a homeowner to, to carry that cost for six to eight months waiting for a permit. So in- increasing, shortening the time, streamlining that and, and reducing the costs or maintaining the level that they are right now uh for homes to be built.
Thank you. Callie, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, thank you. So I agree with Jim in that I think the city has limited um options in terms of uh, you know, offering assistance, if you will, uh to encourage uh building here in town, which would be, you know, with the fees and permits. And then at the last council meeting, there was this uh presentation about how um the fees haven't been updated in the last fifteen years. So there was a proposal to take this quantum leap. Uh you know, essentially in this fee schedule, um not just for building, but you know, for cemetery fees and that kind of thing. But essentially what it would do, like Jim mentioned, um you know, with the ten thousand to the eighteen thousand dollar cost of permits to build a home, um you know, that might make or break somebody in terms of their ability to get a loan. So um I don't think that now is the time um to be increasing these fees. Well, I understand that the city has to, has to increase fees at some point, but I think if they do it, it should be in a graduated fashion. Um potentially starting next year or in the next year or two, um not this quantum leap. And also, I don't agree with the fact that um they have proposed completely waiving the fee to zero for some particular housing um developers, if you will. I think that kind of puts an unfair burden um on the single-family home, people that want to build. So um I don't agree with that.
Thank you. Amy, would you like me to repeat it?
Uh, yes, please.
Okay. Median home prices are currently three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in range, while median income is about thirty-six thousand, something the city is looking at to, are to, are development fees paid to build certain types of housing. There will be a continuance of a public hearing about this on October seventeenth. What is your position on this issue and what do you see as a viable path forward for the city to help with affordable housing for the workforce?
Okay, thank you for that. Um I want to say a lot of things. Um I want to also just say, I think that the average home price in Clallam County is actually four-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars. But no need to pick nits here. Um but um the, I support um the proposed fee ordinance. However, I support and would like to hear more from our staff, which they are preparing some information on doing so in a more phased-in approach. Uh I don't disagree with Kelly that it does feel like a quantum leap um in the fees. However, I also just won't spend um my ninety seconds going over the thirteen types of houses that would not have uh permit fees, zero cost um for permitting for thirteen different types of housing, which actually makes Port Angeles the least expensive location on the Olympic Peninsula, if not the entire state, to construct those thirteen types of housing. So uh I do think that the city is really being creative and really doing and proposing a lot of creative strategies um so that the council can review that. Um and I also think that um we have, we do have a land problem. I know I keep hearing that um from one of my um colleagues on the screen, but we also have a lot of vacant land um that I have um I've had more attention being drawn to. There are large signs on those now. Um but there are um, I'm, ah, got the red light again. I'm sorry, guys.
You'll, you'll have, you'll have a, a chance at the end to, to add some more. Um okay, the next question. There are many complicated issues around the unhoused citizens here, and one picture cannot be painted for all of the individuals. Issues may be the devastating loss of a job, mental illness, addiction. There was an analysis completed in two thousand twenty-one, looking at the number of people who exited to permanent housing and then later returned to homelessness in both Clallum and Jeff- Jefferson Counties. In Clallum County, thirteen percent returned to homelessness, and in Jefferson County, five percent returned. Are you aware of this study and what difference in services there might be? What specific services are in place in Port Angeles and what do you support for the future? Callie, you're first on this one.
That's a really big question. There's a lot of facets to that. Um let's see if I can uh answer them. I was not aware of that study. Uh no, but I was um I was at the Serenity House last week and um maybe kind of got a feel for that by talking, by talking with the um gentleman out there that manage it. And I think the problem that we are um having with, with the housing is trying to house people before they are able to essentially effectively take care of themselves on their own. Um and we also have a big drug problem in Port Angeles. Um my brother's, well, that's in Squim. But um talking to the firefighters last night, they said probably ninety percent of their calls are welfare calls. Um you know, just to go out and check on people that, you know, have had potential overdoses. And that's a huge drain on um, on our system, if you will, you know, on the resources that we have available to us in Port Angeles. You know, for our first responders. So that's why public safety is, is big on my radar right now, but I would like to see more, I would like to see us be more aggressive with um getting people real true help by getting them off of drugs. I would love to see a court mandated like, like a drug court um or something. You know, we've got the BART clinic here in town, which the, which is the opioid um clinic to help people get off of. Oh, I'm done.
Okay, Amy, you're next. You may want, that was a long question. Do you want that one repeated?
No, I got this one.
You got it, you got it, okay.
I'm gonna keep an eye on my timer too. And go. Um I am probably aware of the study that you're referring to without having known when that was completed. Um it, those numbers seem accurate to me. I think I, I believe that the reason that we have any return to homelessness um in some populations is because support services are pulled once an individual is housed. Once an individual becomes housed, the funding sources for those services all but disappear. And so we uh, we may put somebody into a, a house or they may get into a house and they need help with being a renter, they need help with being able to um care for themselves and to perform those activities. But there is not um a nonprofit that has those services because it's not funded from, from grants. Um and that's how nonprofits survive around here. So I think that is a big reason for a return to homelessness. Also, the obvious, um rents go up and income does not. Um rents go up at a much higher rate than income, and if somebody is on a social security disability check, that income goes up by, you know, single-digit dollars um every other year or so. Um and I guess the last thing I will close on is um, Kelly, we do have a drug court in Clallum County. Um so just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you. Jim, would you like the question repeated?
Yeah, can you repeat that once again, please?
I will. I will read it once again. It's a long one. Uh there are many complicated issues around unhoused citizens, and one picture cannot be painted for all individuals. Issues may be the devastating loss of a job, mental illness or addiction. There was an analysis completed in two thousand twenty-one, looking at the number of people who exited to permanent housing and returned to homelessness in both Clallum and Jefferson Counties. In Clallum County, thirteen percent returned to homelessness, and in Jefferson County, five percent returned. Are you aware of this study and what difference in the service there might be? What specific services are in place in Port Angeles and what do you support for the future?
So first of all, that currently the city of Port Angeles does not have a plan to address homelessness or encampments or uh people sleeping on the street. And, and this is, this is a very uncomfortable situation. I uh, you know, I have, I spent four days at the fair and I heard that this is the number one issue that that most citizens of Port Angeles are very frustrated with. The city council has not taken up this question about what can the city do? Right? I'm, I, as a city councilman, I'm not interested in trying to tell Peninsula Behavior Health how they should do their job or how Serenity House does their job unless the city of Port Angeles helps to fund those programs. And at this time, we, we don't do that. So it, it's, it, it's very important that, or at least my view of being a city councilperson is that my job is to deploy the city resources in the best manner possible. And I, at the Kiwanis meeting, I, I laid out, I did some research and I laid out what the city could do in partnership already with code enforcement, uh rediscovery and 4PA to begin to little, be a little bit more forward-leaning into this issue to allow all of those other agencies to do their fine work that they do. But the city of Port Angeles does not deliver all of those services.
Hey, thank you. Um the next few questions are budgetary. You've, you, all of you have mentioned that and and it is important. It's related to everything that you do. Considering taxpayer cost when a need is identified as high priority from public safety to replacing or adding infrastructure or housing, what revenue streams are available to implement them? Amy, you're first.
Considering taxpayer, can you, I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
Okay, considering taxpayer cost, when a need is identified as high priority from public, it could be public, public safety, replacing, adding infrastructure or housing, what revenue streams are available to implement them?
Got it now. Thank you. I appreciate the, the repeat. Um revenue streams for uh priority projects for the city come from less than a handful of places that, that I can think of. Um some of those are uh federal and state grants. And our city staff has been really very diligent about um keeping up with that information and being able to apply for the appropriate grants. And we um, the royal we, we have been very good at um getting those grants. Um we have some big ones coming in for some uh road maintenance uh coming up. So grants um from both the federal and uh state government. We also have um the general fund. Um and um that is uh where we we should be sort of using for our public safety. for our public safety officers if we want to increase officers, if we want to increase or provide funding for our community paramedics or our fire department. We have certain fees in place that also provide revenue sources for certain projects. We do have some fees in place, and we also have the ability to implement some increases in tax. For example, our transportation benefit district tax, we were able to increase that by point zero one percent sales tax so that we can help to improve the look, feel, and structure of our roads in Port Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, you're next. Would you like it repeated?
Yes, please.
Considering taxpayer cost when a need is identified as high priority from public safety to replacing or adding infrastructure or housing, what revenue streams are available to implement them?
So basically, the city of Port Angeles, if you take out the utility department, so we, we buy electricity and we deliver services, take that out, there's really three sources of revenue that come to the city, other than, other than the grant, the grant side of this. That's retail sales tax, property tax, and utility tax. Those are all based upon the size of the tax base of the city of Port Angeles. I am a, I am not a tax-first view of the world. I believe that we need to grow, grow the tax base before we tax the tax base. And so what has happened over time, and here's where we've ended up with the city of Port Angeles. The city of Port Angeles tax base has not kept up even with, with inflation. So over time, the demand for services and the demand from the outside population, road use and those other kinds of things, have put more pressure on the city of Port Angeles to deliver and maintain that infrastructure for more people without an enlarging tax base. So that's the dilemma we're in, and there's really not many other streams of revenue other than growing the streams of revenue we have now. And, and I have not seen a, an economic development strategy that targets how we're gonna grow those, and I'm prepared to begin to work on that.
Thank you. Callie, would you like the question repeated?
No, thank you. I, I agree completely with Jim about the necessity, the imperative necessity to increase our tax base. So really, you know, after, like was mentioned before, we have state and federal grants, and those are specific use only. We have a lodging tax, which is a specific use. And then really for a general fund, like Jim mentioned, we just have the utility property and sales tax. So, you know, common sense would dictate that, you know, either you have to, in order to fund these projects, either you have to increase the tax or widen the base. And I am much in favor of widening the base.
Thank you. The next question is, is related to budget. Recently, Port Angeles completed a wastewater comprehensive plan, which showed over two hundred million dollars in unmet maintenance needs for the city sewer system. How do you believe this should be addressed? Jim, you're first.
Thank you. So that, that study, we, we need to maintain our, the infrastructure of the city. So roads, sewer systems, water systems, that, public safety, fire safety, those are the most important things in my view that the city needs to be doing. Now, if you look at that study, yeah, they, they take into account the two hundred and forty million dollars of work, but that's over a thirty, thirty-some year period of time. There, there's about seven critical issues that need to be dealt with in the next five years. And, and, and the city has already, we've already begun to do it. The staff has laid out a capital facilities plan that we can fund to take care of that, and it needs to be done. I mean, the work that's being done on, on Marine Drive right now is critically important to improve wastewater capacity so the density and the changes in the zoning for more, more houses per lot can occur. Until that's done, many of those lots can't be developed. So I guess my point is, I don't agree with looking at it as two hundred and forty million dollars over the next thirty years, but rather, okay, we've got these, these five critical issues that we need to get dealt with in the next five years. Let's figure out and, and let's budget those and take care of them. And then, because the, the plan had a, a measurement of critical nature of those, and there were really about five that were critical at this point.
Thank you. Callie, would you like the question repeated?
No, thank you. So the, Port Angeles has access to something, I believe, for this issue called the Public Works Trust Fund, which is, it's controlled by the legislature, and it's basically loans for infrastructure for the city at the rate of, you know, as low as one to two percent, which nobody has access to essentially these days to get a, a loan at a rate that low. And the city council currently has a no new debt policy. And I, I think if I get on council, I would like to see that changed because I think now is the time to take out a loan at those very low interest rates and take advantage of that. You know, to be able to work on these, these critically necessary infrastructure issues. So that is the route that I would take.
Amy, would you like the question repeated?
Uh, no, I think I'm, I'm good. Thank you. This is a really big issue with sort of a, a brief answer from me, at least. I have sat through a lot of those presentations. I'm also on the Utility Advisory Board Committee, so I was able to see additional presentations of the St. Water, other wastewater facilities plan. And I support the, the staff recommendation that was brought to council in Strategic Plan Number One A, where it does, it does not take on new debt, and it phases in a fee structure and also a, an SDC, so the Service Connection Base Rate Fee that we have not had. So I think that, I don't necessarily think we need to continue being very stringent on the no new debt piece of things, but I don't think this is an area where we have reached that level of need. Our staff has been able to plan, identify, along with our consultants, a, a good plan forward, and I do support what they've recommended.
Hey, thank you. The next question. Washington State's minimum wage will move to sixteen dollars and twenty-eight cents an hour next year. What impact, if any, do you see this having on the jobs and economy in Port Angeles? Callie, you're first.
Uh, I think this is a really difficult for, I'm not an economist, I'm just gonna say that, but I think it's really difficult for employers to keep up with. You know, kind of the mom and pop store like we see here in Port Angeles, we're not the big box stores. You know, we're the smaller businesses, and I think that's gonna be crippling to some employers. Also, there's this Generation X, if you will. I can kind of speak to that, some, the tail end of it, or the front end of it, whatever. There is definitely this entitlement in, in the new workforce coming up. You know, people are not wanting to work and they are, it's, it's, it's a problem. So, and I, I don't have a good answer for it, but I do think it's going to cripple, it's gonna make businesses have a harder time to stay in business here in Port Angeles specifically.
Amy, would you like it repeated?
No, thank you. I think, I, I think it will impact small businesses. My husband is a small business owner, and so there's no way, it, it won't impact small businesses. It's, I think it's really about the shift in people not wanting to work jobs that don't fit their education, work jobs that don't also provide a quality of life. And if we aren't paying a living wage, then we're not going to see people want to take those types of jobs, and we'll see them go elsewhere. I think what I would really like to see in Port Angeles is an increase in some skilled trade jobs. I'd also like to see an increase in some professional level employment. So I think drawing more up employment opportunities to create some competition won't, won't be a bad thing. I think minimum wage should go, should be where we can offer a living wage so that people don't have to work two to three jobs to afford a place to stay, to for, to afford to put food on their table. I think it's a necessity, and otherwise I don't necessarily think that the state would take it on so much. And I, I trust that there are actual economists that do some of these studies and put the math in the pen to paper and do the math. But what I'm seeing on the ground is that minimum wage does not equal living wage.
Thank you. Jim, would you like the question repeated?
No, I'm, I, I'm very familiar with this one. So the city, as a city council person, to look at this, we have to understand what the impact is, right? That was back to your question, what is the impact of this? And what has happened in the state of Washington is the increase in the minimum wage over time has now become counterproductive economically. And, and how that happens is it, it doesn't allow as many workers in the workforce. And number one, because businesses, primarily small businesses, can't incur the cost of that labor. That's number one. So less people are gonna be working, less services provided. And then the second one is, the cost of the product to deliver has gone up astronomically. And any, any business that's related to workers at a minimum wage, primarily, again, I grew up and ran a business for, restaurant business for many years. When you go out to eat now, a portion, a, a large portion of that cost increase is from the increase in minimum wage with no, no reduction or tip credit or anything else. So we pay for it. It's very inflationary, and I think that in the state of Washington, I think we're getting to a point now where it becomes counterproductive and in its, in its escalation over time, where it automatically increases over time. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Yeah, I'm on the muted. Okay. Recently passed federal laws provide substantial local funding opportunities for climate change mitigation. There are two parts to this question. Do you believe we face climate risks on the peninsula? Please explain why or why not? And would you favor trying to access federal funding on this issue? Amy, you're first for this one.
Great, I go off the cuff. I didn't have time to make any notes. Do I believe that we are facing climate risk? Yes. Why do I believe that? Because, I mean, we have to go on our water shortage maintenance and schedules around here. We are seeing an increase in forest fires. We are seeing odd natural disasters. And science tells us that is the case, that what we are facing is climate issues. I'm sorry, Linda, can you tell me the second part of that question again? Got it on the little soapbox. You're on mute, but I think I remember the question now. Do I favor federal?
Yeah, do you favor accessing the federal funds? Sorry.
No, thank you, Linda. Yes, yes, I do. Yes, of course I do. I think that we should, as a city and as a county, we should be trying to get all of the federal funds that we can to help us mitigate the climate risk that we were, we are facing here on the, the peninsula, which includes helping our rivers and streams become healthy and helping our green spaces be more green and other things, including getting a seat at the table when decisions are being made when we're looking at our watershed issues that are going. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
Yes, I believe the climate impacts our city and city government in the area that we live. And I don't believe that the citizens of Port Angeles can totally carry the cost of, of some of those, the results of some of those impacts. But I also believe that we need to have an honest evaluation of the severity of those and how they relate to the citizens of Port Angeles. Currently, the state of Washington just added a fifty, fifty-plus cent per gallon for a cap and trade policy in the state of Washington. Every citizen in Port Angeles is already paying. So I'm not sure, and I would be very critical and a hard judge of how much further and how much more burden we want to put on the city, the citizens of Port Angeles, based upon what is already occurring. So I, there are things that happen, and, and many times FEMA and the federal government is there to, to support cities. And I fully support looking at federal funds and other sources of funds when certain catastrophes happen. I fully support that. And that's what the federal government is there to help us locally.
Thank you. Callie, would you like it repeated?
Yes, please.
Okay. Recently passed federal laws provide substantial local funding opportunities for climate change mitigation. So there's two parts to the question. Do you believe we face climate risks on the peninsula? Why or why not? And would you favor trying to access federal funding for this issue?
I'm gonna be unpopular opinion here and say no. I don't, I do believe that the climate affects us here on the, on the Olympic Peninsula. Amy had mentioned something about the watershed. You know, I think there could be an argument for forests, forests being mismanaged, and that's why there's increased fires. I do not believe that climate mitigation is something that we really have a, a realistic handle on, if you will. I think the verdict is still out on that. And I, that is not a priority, that would not be a priority for me as a council member. Like going back, like I said, the priority would be more public safety, rather than climate. Climate issues would be lower on my list, and that is actually not something that I would pursue.
Hey, thank you. All right, the next question changes the subject a little bit. If elected, what will you do to provide meaningful opportunities for our youth? How will you work with our schools to provide this? And Jim, you're first this time.
So again, I go back to the point of what, what can the city of Port Angeles do? The city no longer is in the recreation business. They, now you have YMCA, and you have the college and school districts are doing that thing. So from, from a, a city council position, I'm not sure we have a role other than we do as individuals. And I have been doing this, helping the youth of, of Port Angeles for forty years. And, and as a matter of fact, my family is, we're committed ourselves just this fall. My, myself, my son, my daughter, and my son-in-law are all gonna coach YMCA basketball at first and second grade. My daughter-in-law is, is coaching a young writers' cheer team, and my wife is gonna be on her eighth year of coaching high school gymnastics. So that is the way in which So that is the way in which I think my, an individual myself, I can help youth, and I have a long history, including entrepreneur challenges, going up to the high school to talk to business classes. So I have a long history to do that. And I think my actions will represent how I think about the importance of the youth in our area, how I commit my time to doing that.
Thank you. Would, Callie, would you like the question repeated?
No, thank you. I am sensitive to this subject, having five little, five little kiddos growing up in the community. But I agree with Jim in the sense, you know, what is the purview of the city council? Again, speaking with Mr. Delacott with the Parks and Rec about one of the basketball programs in town, it actually did better when the city let go of it and gave it to the Riddell family to kind of direct. They've been able to really do some great things for the community and bring a lot of tourists to town for like an annual basketball workshop that they do. So I think though potentially, I think the city had a hand in bringing the ice skating rink to town. I think that's been a great thing for the community. You know, and then they did the skating rink. So I would be supportive of, you know, maybe some, a big seasonal thing like that or potentially getting something permanent. But, but again, like the purview is of the city council. I think those programs thrive better when they are directed and managed by our community members.
Thank you. Amy, would you like it repeated?
No, thank you. I think, I believe that the city council and the city departments actually do quite a bit for our youth. I know that there is a lot of youth-centered involvement with our law enforcement and having youngsters crawl around the patrol cars and being able to learn about a career in law enforcement. I know that our fire department is also involved in activities of that nature. Specific to city council, I think that we could play a larger role in helping our young students and our young people to understand what a career in civics would look like. Other cities do have a youth council. I know that as council members, we are sometimes invited into the high school civics classes to talk about the work that is being done on council. I think that's a really nice way to get the youth involved. And I think broadening my definition of youth up to the age of twenty-six, which I think is the federal definition of that. I think there's also ways to have that involvement with the college as well and being able to help mold, educate, inspire young people to want to do this kind of work. Because I think having younger people in positions, in elected positions is really valuable. And I think also, there's several other things I thought, but most importantly, I think we need to house them. We have families that are living in their cars, and that is not protecting our youth. And I think, again, comes back to housing. We need to house them and we need to have programs that work on prevention. All of our city-held events, not all of them, a lot of our city-held events include alcohol. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next question. The city is required by state law to update the comprehensive plan. What do you believe, believe should be included in this update? Callie, you're first.
I am sorry, I'm going to also say that I don't know enough about this yet to give a really intelligent answer. Because I don't know what's there. I have, I have looked at the comprehensive plan. I have not comprehended the comprehensive plan yet. But that will be to remain, you know, left to see if I, if I get on council. So thank you.
Thank you. Amy?
I like that answer. I'm not comprehended the comprehensive plan. And it's huge. It's, you know, thousands of pages long. And it is a, a broad strokes and then a more deeper dive into different projects that each department has for their department and what funding that's going to take and what priorities these projects are going to be at. I think as far as things that need to be included that are not included, I would like to see additional partnerships with other organizations, specifically maybe nonprofit organizations. I think we do see some partnerships in some of our departments. I would like to see more of those. I think getting our community to help care for our community is really going to be our key to success. I would also like to see maybe a more aggressive, more assertive way of looking at what is prioritized and being able to really make a decision on prioritizing that with, and sometimes what that means is there's going to be projects that have to not be on the priority list in the plan. And so I guess what a long-winded way of saying, I'd like to really, at our next opportunity, take a real deep dive in being able to prioritize, you know, the top five, the top ten projects and be okay with letting some of the other more, maybe more recreation, more beautification projects wait. Or, or have them be completed by our community members. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
Yeah, so the, the comprehensive plan is a vision for where the city is going to go in the next twenty years. And so it comes in different, in different categories of attention. So one of them is, twenty years ago, we defined with, with the county, a urban growth area. That urban growth area was defined as the place where urban services, higher density development would occur. We haven't done very much of that in Port Angeles. They did a lot more in Squim to extend urban services out. So I think an extension to grow land base, to make more land available, to enlarge the, the city within the current UGA boundary is, is something to take a look at. The second one is, I think that there needs to be a critical analysis of the services and the programs by which what the city is, is trying to deliver and whether we can do that in the future. I think a comprehensive plan of a decade or more ago is quite different than it is today. And it's quite different than it's going to be in the future. So a creative, in-depth look of what are the services we're providing, number one. And then number two is, I built a history of working collaboratively across governmental agencies. I think we've got to really take a hard look at how the city functions with the county, particularly as another government and the tribes in our area, and how we can deliver better services to the citizens that live here within that comprehensive plan.
Okay, thank you. So the next question is related to the county. And it's our last question. We're doing really well on time today. We'll get, we'll get finished early. I'm sure you're exhausted anyway. Okay, what do you think about Claloon County's six-year, two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-nine transportation plan? And Amy, you're first.
I appreciate that question. And admittedly, I don't have an answer for that. I would have to be able to spend some time looking at the plan. Thanks for the question and happy to have a conversation with somebody after I've been able to review that.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
I have to answer that question in a similar way. I've, I've been studying for the last six months on city government and not on county government. So I'm not, I'm not up to speed on what their comprehensive transportation plan looks like. I'm more familiar with what we're trying to do in the city and what some of the, the transportation issues are and improvements that are going to be made. So thank you.
Okay. Callie?
My counterparts have both, both very eloquently said exactly what I'm thinking, so I concur. Thank you.
If I, if I may, take some of my seconds back. I think this also highlights that there is a lot of room for the city and the county to be better partners. And so I, I really do appreciate that question. It has, for me, definitely hit home that there is a lot of room for us to be better partners with our, our county counterparts and other cities. So thank you very much for whoever submitted that question.
Okay. Jim or Amy, would you like to add anything since we have time? Jim, you were next.
No, thanks. I'm fine.
Okay.
The next question.
Okay. Okay. That was our last question. So now we're ready for your, each candidate's summary and for you to make your final statement. So each of you will have ninety seconds to do that. And Callie, you are first in line for that one.
I, first of all, thank you for having us again tonight. This is the first for me and it's been a learning experience and I appreciate your time. So I think that you should vote for me because Port Angeles needs to change. Current councils had four years to disrupt the concerning trends that I mentioned earlier. And quite simply, despite their best efforts, they haven't done it. A tree is known by its fruit, so please be an informed voter and look at their fruit and ask yourself, how is my life better as a Port Angeles resident in the past four years? If we continue this path with the same council and the same policies, how will it be better in ten to twenty years for my children? If you look at my fruit, I am not a politician. Quite honestly, I don't see how that's a bad thing. I am a real mom with a real family, having the same struggles and concerns you all are. I am here as a servant to my community and I bring the ability to listen and to critically think, the ability to learn new things and to analyze data, and most importantly, to use common sense to make sound judgments for the good of the community. I hear the silent majority who doesn't want PA to turn into Seattle. I hear our friends and family who live in the county but who still own businesses and patron businesses in the city. I hear families who just want a safe, healthy, prosperous community to raise their family, and I'm with you. So in the end, if nothing changes, nothing changes. If nothing else, I hope my campaign will inspire you, the community members, to get involved, to change the narrative around you if you don't agree with it. So I humbly ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, you're next.
Again, thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting on this Zoom forum tonight. So I have the passion, the knowledge, the experience and the proven leadership to be an effective Port Angeles City Council member and represent the most citizens of the community. The council, the current council needs balance. And what I mean by that is balance in viewpoints, balance, balance in experience. And I think I bring that to the council. Currently, the council's priorities, and I judge priorities by what kind of topics are on the agenda and what are the kinds of things that they're taking on. I don't believe that those are in the best interests of the most citizens of Port Angeles. So the city council currently is prioritizing enforcement of short-term rentals over encampments and cleaning and taking care of public space. They're, they're prioritizing raising revenues through tax increases rather than strategies for economic growth. And I, and I just, I don't agree with that. I think that there are, are ways that we can go about that. My approach as a council member is to produce results, and that's been my history. I want to thank over a hundred and thirty people that have called me and asked to put up signs in their front yard. I appreciate and I'm humbled by that. But I ask for your vote. Ballots go out on the eighteenth and the general election is November seventh. Thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thank you. Amy?
Thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters. And also thank you to my colleagues and opponents for showing up tonight and giving it your best. It's been a long month. So my name is Amy Miller, and I may not have been born and raised here. But four years after I took up residence in the city of Port Angeles, I was recognized by the Chamber of Commerce as Citizen of the Year for the work that I was doing. Myself and the program that I developed brought in over a million dollars in a single year in grant money and has successfully provided over twenty jobs for individuals who are now earning a living wage and doing work that brings hope and opportunities to the working people who have been left behind. That's a real difference, and it's also a positive impact on our local economy. True leadership, as I have demonstrated, requires more than just name recognition. It demands concrete actions, meaningful contributions, and a genuine understanding of the community's needs. I started as a volunteer with PAPD, attending city council meetings on a date night, organizing the city's annual international overdose awareness events. I spearheaded the Shelter Challenge in two thousand eighteen, and the PDN and King Five News spotlighted my work for the impact I was making on the citizens of Port Angeles. Earlier this year, I was appointed to the city council position two. As a former co-responder with PAPD and PAFD, I not only have their support, but I have a unique understanding of the real life issues that our first responders face and how the city can improve their experiences both on and off the job. I've made a valuable impact on this community in the eight short years I've lived here, and I'm only getting started. Support me. I believe it's the right thing to do.
I want to give a thank, a special thank you to all of you candidates for participating. This is really a job interview. This is what happens at forums. You're asking for people's votes. And it's a job interview, and we are really grateful that you were willing to do this. And thank you to everyone who tuned in. And what you are doing is being an informed voter, which is what our, our democracy really, really needs. Please go to our website, l w v c l a dot org for a link to our YouTube site where you can view this forum at your convenience or any forum that we've done. Please allow a few days for this to get posted. Don't forget to check out vote four one one dot org for responses from other candidates. Election Day is November seventh. Ballots will be mailed the eighteenth. Voter registration is available in person up until eight PM on Election Day. But online voter registration ends October thirtieth. Stay on a few minutes if you wish to view the informational PowerPoint. And thanks again to all of you for your participation. Good night.